We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
And Mayor Koontz.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight for this council meeting, and with that, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. There is no additions or corrections, so.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brent to approve.
Second.
Second by Bill Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now we will move on to 1.4, which we have with the mayor. Now, we got, Tim is here, I believe, for the drawings, draw winners and award prizes for the 2014 Park Passport Program.
Yes. Thanks, Les. The Oatana Passport Program is in its third year of existence to the public. One of our main goals is to leave, to have city residents live a healthy lifestyle. Geez, I can't even talk. We had 166 entries this year with a total of 450-plus participants, which is pretty close to what we had last year. Without this, the partnerships that we do have, this would not be such a successful program as well as would be possible. I'd like to thank Mayo Clinic Health System, Stephanie Olson, Straight River Sports, Ann Paulson is here tonight, and Cabela's for their sponsorship in this. Like I said, we had 166 participants, and we'll be drawing for five prizes. The five prizes include the Brooktree Golf Course, gift certificate, Cabela's camp pack, bike package towards a bike at Straight River Sports, 30 passes to River Springs Water Park, and outdoor sports pack. What's that, Ann? Join me here to do the drawing.
Tim, are you going to do this as you did last year, that you're going to call the first person and they're going to get to choose?
Yes.
So our five winners, the first winner will be, the first choice will be the Lusting family, Becky, Kyle, Sammy, Sierra, and Lexi. The third one is Al and Cheryl Arnold. Fourth would be Michelle Sorensen, and the last one is Izine Rogers. So those are our five winners of our passport program this year. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations to all the winners, and obviously, they're not all here watching for this, right? With that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 1.4.2, proclamation for Oatana Foundation Week, and we'll go to Tom for that.
Thanks, Les. This week is the Oatana Foundation Week. The Oatana Foundation is very, very important to our community, does a great job of raising funds and redistributing them back to the community. They use them in our parks and trails, they use it for the history center, they've used it for the dam, so it's very, very important. And the proclamation reads, whereas, the Oatana Foundation has established a goal of improving the quality of life for present and future generations of Oatana residents, and whereas, the Oatana Foundation has contributed over $11 million to improve the welfare of our community within the areas of arts, community, education, and recreation. And whereas, the Oatana Foundation is committed to a strong leadership role in helping fundraising initiatives that engage our community and assist volunteers with energy, enthusiasm, and success. And whereas, the Oatana Foundation makes our community stronger by distributing funds in the forms of grants for specific bricks and mortar community projects, as well as those through scholarships to help further the education goals of individuals. Whereas, the Oatana Foundation touches the lives of every citizen in Oatana and helps to shape the future of our community by funding projects that make a difference in our lives and the lives of future generations. Now therefore, I, Thomas A. Koontz, mayor of the City of Oatana, hereby proclaim Sunday, October 5th through Saturday, October 11th, 2014, as Oatana Foundation Week, and ask the citizens of Oatana to help recognize and support the Oatana Foundation as they raise the visibility and awareness of the Oatana Foundation's role in improving the quality of life in Oatana. Dated October 7th, 2014, Thomas A. Koontz.
Thank you. And I wish them well, and as a worthy organization in Oatana. With that, we'll move on to public hearings, 1.5.1, improvement projects, and we will be postponing that until our next meeting, which will be October 21st. And moving on to the next item, which is a financial report, and I will ask Greg Schultz to report on it.
Okay. A recap of checks over 20,000 are $21,483 to Crane Creek Asphalt for hot mix, $20,616 to D&amp;M Construction for bunker restoration, which came from the Imprellis funds, $30,015 to DMC Plumbing and Heating for the wastewater treatment plant boiler replacement, $167,228 to Dan Borneke Construction for the Northwest Industrial Pond, $22,953 to Hartman Companies for fairway restoration from the flood damage, $42,960 to Henry G. Makes for road oil, $30,660 to Oakview Nursery for the Brooktree Patio, which came from Imprellis funds, $30,080 to Oatana Area Chamber of Commerce for lodging tax. Add to that other expenditures of $267,286 for a subtotal of $633,284. Add to that Section 8 payments of $57,453 makes total expenditures presented for approval of $690,738.
Thank you for the report, and what is the council's wishes?
Last one comment, if I could. Fairway restoration, let's be clear that that's fairway and the golf course, it's not fairway foods for flood damage.
Yes, it's F-A-I.
Yes, yes. Motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to pay the bills. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Moving on to consent agenda items, these are minutes of meetings, license permit requests, board commission meeting minutes, et cetera, all grouped into one motion. What is the council's wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Bill Thompson to approve the consent agenda items. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now we'll move on to action items, which are 3.1.1, tree trimmers permit, D&amp;D yard services, and we'll go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. We've received an application from Dean Ringhofer and Dennis Wimmer. They're starting a business for yard care. They've applied for a tree trimmers license. We've received payment of the license fee and also a certificate of liability insurance. License would be effective upon approval and expire in March of 2015. License fee is $25 per year. Staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to contracts, agreements, we got 3.2.1, non-commercial lease agreement with Oatana Squadron Civil Air Patrol, and we'll go to Troy.
The Oatana Squadron Civil Air Patrol is a U.S. Air Force auxiliary civilian volunteer nonprofit service organization that has operated off the airport for 15 years. They consist of both senior and cadet members with the primary mission of aerospace, education, emergency services, and cadet programs. The CAP currently has a land lease with the city where they have a trailer on the airport, and it was, dates back to 2003. The trailer is badly depreciated and is scheduled for removal, and therefore, we've been talking with the Civil Air Patrol about locating within the terminal space. And the lease agreement in your packet here provides for the use of a portion of existing rentable terminal office space for the CAP business, including meetings, classrooms, and storage space required for operation of the squadron. The agreement provides that in the event that the premise is needed for airport use, aeronautical development or aeronautical business, the lease would terminate and the premise should revert to the city. So we have space available. It's intended for aeronautical businesses. It's vacant right now. Our intention would be for them to locate there. If we do need that space, and we'll be marketing it for an aeronautical business, we do have a backup plan in which they would be using a couple of different rooms, other rooms within the facility. The initial term of the lease agreement provides for an annual rent rate of the lease premise of about 87 cents a square foot, which results in a $100 payment. We sort of agreed on $100, and so staff would recommend approval of the airport non-commercial use lease agreement with the Oatana Squadron Civil Air Patrol.
Thank you, Troy. Questions from the council? Terrell, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Bill Thompson. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to 3.2.2, commercial lease agreement, Nemesis Defense Systems, and again, Troy.
Nemesis Defense Systems is a company recently founded to provide technical consultation in building defense systems to deter public building active shooter scenarios. So it's a startup company. They're seeking an agreement with the City of Oatana to rent a small portion of terminal and hangar space at the airport to set up administrative testing and assembly of systems. The CEO of the company is an active commercial rated pilot and views a premise ideal for this sort of business that may include a broad airport building security application. The initial term would be for six months, and again, we put some language in there. If we do need the space for aeronautical businesses, that they could vacate the space and we would make it available for the aeronautical use. The Airport Commission has reviewed the proposed scope of services along with the basic lease terms and conditions. Nemesis executive staff are familiar with the airport operations and are considering locating a turbine aircraft at the airport under a separate agreement. So the initial discussion actually was to get an airplane in one of our hangar spaces. It's a startup business that the pilot is also doing. That space works really well for them, and so that's how this discussion came about for this agreement. The initial term of the lease agreement provides for a base rental rate of $12.50 for office space and $4.61 square, or, $4.61 for square footage for the small portion of rentable hangar space, which amounts to $300 a month. Again, the Airport Commission has reviewed this and approved it, and staff would recommend approval of this commercial use lease agreement with Nemesis Defense Systems.
Thank you, Troy. Again, questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to board and commission recommendations, 3.3.1, C-1368, Northland Farm System, a 9,000-square-foot structure at 2250 Austin Road. Troy?
Northland Farm Systems is proposing a 9,000-square-foot accessory structure on their property on Austin Road. The ordinance states accessory structures, over 50% of the floor area of the primary structure are only permitted by conditional use permit for commercial properties. It would be a 60-foot by 150-foot building. It would have 18-foot-high side walls and a 28-foot-high peak at the roof. The setbacks would be 84 feet off the north property line and 67 feet from the east property line. The proposed structure would contain a 50-by-50 wash bay for the large equipment, and the remainder of the building would be used for storage. The app can is proposing to construct an infiltration basin to handle the stormwater as required by our stormwater ordinance. This is only sized to handle the required treatment of the additional impervious surface being constructed for the building. At the, there was a public hearing at the planning commission, and there were a number of neighbors there expressing concern for stormwater on the south side. And as you know, that area from 18th Street in front of the bowling alley down 4th Avenue to Cedar Dale Drive is one of our two remaining areas that we know we have flooding issues from the main study we had done in 2007 and 2008. We had in our capital improvement plan to address that in 2016, and from a staff level, we had some discussion after the planning commission meeting if there's any way to help move that along quicker. It is possible, we believe, to address that stormwater in two phases. One would be a line that would run through the Northland Farms property and take the water from that area, as well as east of Austin Road, and take it to the Highway 14 ditch area. The bigger portion of the project would be addressing that stormwater on 18th Street in front of the bowling alley and getting that eventually to the Straight River. So from a staff level, we think that first phase could be done next year without, just using our existing capital improvement funds, and then again, dressing that second phase in 2016, so that, you know, again, we're knocking off another one of those stormwater projects off the list. And, you know, we've been working on those. We've addressed kind of the stormwater issues already in industrial park here the last two years with a couple of ponds. This really is probably the next highest priority on our list, and I think to help address some of the concerns the neighbors have in addressing Northland's project, we could get that first phase done in 2015 with the, with the bigger portion in 2016 and try to get that both, both parts taken care of by 2016. We would need an easement from Northland through their property in order to do that phase one, so that would be something that we would be looking for from Northland in order to address that stormwater. But with the planning commission meeting, the planning commission did invite the residents out there to come to the council and discuss some of the stormwater issues that they have, so I would invite the council to allow them to speak on that. The planning commission did eventually recommend approval of the conditional use permit, and so staff would recommend approval as recommended by the planning commission.
Thank you, Troy. And before I do a council question or comment, I'm going to open it up, which we normally don't do for an agenda like this, but I will open it up to anyone who wishes to speak, and I would ask you to try to keep it as brief as possible. And I think we've got a tablet there. If you'd sign in, it has your name and everything. Could I have your name first?
Sorry. My name is Jason Buck. I live at 2225 4th Avenue Southeast. And as Troy had mentioned, I attended the meeting that previously spoke about the Northland expansion that they intend to do, and what I was trying to emphasize was that I wanted to see some sort of action out of the city to alleviate the long-term issues that we have had with water. I have something pretty extensive that I could read. I'm actually going to leave that tonight after hearing what Troy has said. If, if you continue forward with this plan of trying to move the water from Northland to a different direction towards 14, that is at least a step in the right direction in my mind, and I appreciate hearing that. We need to see a reduction in the water. I've lived at my residence for over 20 years, and all I've seen is a steady increase in water due to a lot of the construction that's happening around me. So that was my main concern about the Northland property and what they're going to do there. I don't want to stop what they're doing. I'm not trying to put yonas on them. I'm trying to ask the city to continue to improve the infrastructure and make it workable for our area, primarily 4th Avenue and Cedar Dale as well. Because that water currently does move from the Northland property in a direction that goes towards the west and makes its way through Cedar Dale and ends up in 4th Avenue, and it causes a lot of localized ponding and flooding in various neighborhoods. But that essentially ends up being is, you know, public water that's sitting on private property. So we're just asking that you try to reduce that, and I'm also kind of curious to hear a little bit more about what the further improvement is, because I don't believe that the Northland changes that you're recommending are going to be enough to alleviate all of our flooding issues that we have. I also do believe that a lot of our water comes from 18th Street as well, so if those improvements are going to be part of that, then I'd like to hear more about that, too. So essentially, what I'd like to do, I won't read this tonight, but I will be in contact with various individuals. I've already spoke with Kyle a few times, too, and I'll continue to push that way. But any other information that you have as far as the 18th Street, I'd like to hear about.
Okay. I think we do have a plan for 18th Street, but with this change and this building, we may have to implement something a little bit sooner on the property, so I think that's a good move, and I think we should be looking at it, so. We'll continue the dialogue on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else wish to be heard? With that, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Nate? Motion by Nate to close the public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Bill Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed, and now any questions from the council?
I have, I have one. Troy, with that, you recommended approval of it. Would that be approval with the condition that that phase one be completed in 2015?
You certainly could add that to there. I think that's our intentions. I think that would probably be a good statement to make to the neighbors that getting that first phase one done, showing the commitment that, yeah, we are going to move forward with that stormwater improvement.
I'd like to see that added.
So we need a contingency of a, of a.
It would not be, I would not make it a condition of the approval. I would add it as a statement after. Because what they're requesting, the condition you're adding falls on the city to do. What they're requesting, that condition should not be a condition of what they plan on doing.
Do we need access? We need approval from them to access the property for the improvement, Northland, correct?
In order to do the project, we would need an easement from, through the Northland property, and I think there's been some discussions about that already, so that would be something that would be needed for this improvement.
Do we have anybody here from Northland? Would you guys be open to that, with the agreement?
Yeah, but, I mean, we have a timeline.
Kelly, can you come up to the mic, please? Yeah.
I'm a partner with Kelly Katzen at Northland Farm Systems. I guess our point would be that we're trying to proceed with the building, and we really don't, what we're doing, we've addressed the excess water that will be off the impervious area with the, with the planning and zoning people, and we've also added a, I guess, how you call it, a stormwater retention in the event of a heavy rain or whatever is part of the building plan, which has been, I assume the council has seen. And we really don't want to be tied up. We would like to proceed with the facility this year as opposed to waiting for, if we wait for the city to do their thing as far as getting rid of the excess stormwater, the, Northland was there before the addition, not, not Northland per se, but the property has been in existence for many years, the implement dealership has been there for many years, as most of you know. And all we'd like to do is, you know, we discussed this with Kyle, I believe, you know, negotiating our way through approving an easement, which we would, we would do, you know, it's probably going to be better on our property than in Todd's backyard, because, you know, he's right up against the line, and we have maybe a little bit more flexibility in that to, you know, help the city out in that, in that standpoint.
I think what they're asking for is not to stop the project, but to request an easement process or easement through your property to do this by the city. I think that's what they're looking at, is, and that's what we would be asking for, is the easement, but not to stop the project.
Right. We'd be in agreement, I believe Kelly and I would be in agreement for the easement, but I don't know exactly how that process works.
Okay.
Yeah, I think what we.
Depends on how much you're going to pay me.
I think what we'd be looking for is approval so that you can proceed with your project yet this fall, just securing an easement so that the improvements can be done next year.
Yep.
We just want you to be open to work with the city to do this phase one.
Well, as I discussed with, with Kyle, that, you know, we're negotiable.
Okay.
You know, and I don't know what that process takes to approve that.
I think as long as you are open to working with the city on that, I don't see a problem.
Yeah, I would say we are.
But as far as this, this is not contingent on that.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Kevin?
So the, the holding pond would still be part of this project then, is that correct?
Yes.
And with the, with the holding pond, that's going to be a private pond, do you have a plan in place in regards to mosquito mitigation?
We're, we're under the one acre, so there are different conditions involved, and this will not be a retention pond. It's a detention pond, so we're controlling the rate of flow off of the property, so it's not going to hold water.
Right, but it'll, it'll still be probably wet conditions that mosquitoes can breed in.
What, what do you want to answer to that?
Well, like on, on city ponds, we, we put chemicals in the ponds that eliminates mosquito breeding going on in those, and I guess my expectation would be that there'd be some type of the same thing being done there.
Yeah, that's, we don't want mosquitoes either, but it's, it's not like a typical retention pond.
Yes.
Most, 99% of the time, it would be wet.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, what is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Bill Thompson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Congratulations and good luck, and look forward to working with you on the easement.
Now, do we want to make a note in the council meeting that, that phase one will be done in 2015?
Yes, I think we need to add that on to the discussion.
Okay.
Should we have a motion? Perhaps a motion to.
Do we, do we need a motion for that?
Or maybe just indication to staff to include that in 2015 plans?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I would look for consensus from the council as to which. Okay, I guess I would look for consensus from the council as to which preference there. Yes, Brenner?
Yeah.
Yes. Bill?
Yes, let's move it along.
Okay, thank you. You had a question, Nate?
Well, my question was going to be in regards to the 18th drainage, you know, in that area. How, where are we at as far as any kind of a design? Do we have a general idea of what needs to happen in that area?
We do. We have a report that was done in, end of 2010. What we don't have is a funding source. So we are looking at a, we're in the middle of a, not in the middle, in the beginning stages of a rate study. And with our new MS-4 permit, we're going to be bringing some ordinance changes. Along with that, we're going to bring the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, and the funding sources for that. So you're, you're going to be seeing some decisions, you know, prioritizing the projects and how to fund them in the next six to nine months.
And with that, Kyle, we would, you know, any work we do here would require some funding also, because this is a city project.
The, the Phase 1 project is a smaller portion.
Okay.
I believe we have some funds available to do that in 2015, but it'll be included in that consideration on the rate study, so.
Okay, great. Kevin?
What kind of cost are we looking at, Kyle, approximate, for 2015?
The back of the envelope, one, is about $200,000 for construction.
Okay.
And that's going to depend on the route and the restoration costs, of course. It could go higher than that.
Okay. So we do have a consensus that we would like to have that done next year, and this is a potential cost.
Okay. Very good.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance is 3.4.1, first reading of proposed ordinance, 714 Z 2326 for Lee Holding Group, and this will go to Troy again.
Lee Holding Group purchased the property at 175 18th Street Southwest. It was formerly the Stuart Thompson Building. Used to do cabinets in there, so it has an IP Industrial Park zoning district to it, and it was kept in industrial district because of the use of cabinet making in there. It is a spot zone currently. The new owners are making renovations to the property and would like it in a commercial zone so that it can be marketed for commercial use. Went to Planning Commission, public hearing, there was no opposition to the zone change, and was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. So staff would recommend approval of the zone change from IP Industrial Park District to B2 Community Business District as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Bill Thompson. Any further discussion there?
Second by Kevin.
Oh, Kevin, I'm sorry. Almost sounded the same here. You know, this is the first reading, and this, with that, we'll ask for roll call.
Councilmember Rainey?
Aye.
Svenby?
Aye.
Dotson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Burbank?
Aye.
Abraham?
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Thank you. Next, next item, 3.4.2, first reading, proposed ordinance, Z 327 for Statine Properties of Owatonna at 1940 and 2020 Cedar Avenue South, and this will go back to Troy.
This is a similar request from Statine Properties of Owatonna to rezone property from I-1 Light Industrial to B2. It's the old Wholesale Tire Building and the Daybreak Construction Company Building just to the north of that. Those two properties currently in the I-1 Zone, this would be rezoned for future development of a hotel. There will be, as part of that project, other zoning approvals that will come before the board, including platting of the property and a conditional use permit for the hotel. The property, to the, the northern property does have a billboard on it. Billboards are not permitted in a commercial zone, so this would make that non-conforming, and so the Planning Commission did make a recommendation to approve it with the billboard being removed. So staff would recommend approval of the zone change as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Troy. Again, any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion here? Seeing none?
Did we lose Wholesale Tire as a employer in town?
Wholesale Tire did decide to close and not reopen at a different location in town. They do have other locations other than Owatonna that I think remain open, but they did not choose to reopen in Owatonna.
Okay. That being an ordinance, ask for roll call.
Councilmember Rainey?
Aye.
Svenby?
Aye.
Dotson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Burbank?
Aye.
And Abraham?
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Thank you. Next item is 3.4.3, first reading of proposed ordinance, 1914, the franchise agreement with Jaguar Communications, and we'll go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. As you know, council reviewed the proposed franchise with our attorney, Bob Voss. This, this franchise agreement is an ordinance, so this is the first hearing on this ordinance. I'll ask Bob to come up and make some preliminary comments, if you would.
Evening, council. Again, Bob Voss, Kennedy and Graven, you're outside, legal counsel on cable television matters. You have before you tonight for first reading a now negotiated franchise with Jaguar Communications. As Chris indicated, the franchise is really more like a contract than an ordinance, but this city and most cities adopt these franchises as ordinances, and so it's here before you as an ordinance. It has been negotiated. This is, again, a negotiated deal with Jaguar, and so I and staff have been negotiating with Jaguar since your public hearing and since we talked about their application. I guess I would, council president, just hit the high points. It's a 50-page-plus exhibits document, and so I'm not going to be able to go through every point. We did have a good discussion in workshop earlier tonight and went through it in more detail. But the high points, if I may, of the franchise ordinance are that it would, first of all, be a 15-year agreement, a 15-year arrangement, and Jaguar greatly urged us toward 15 years. We've been talking with your incumbent provider, Charter, about a 10-year arrangement. Jaguar would prefer a 15-year arrangement because, of course, they're making an initial very large investment in your community, and so they want a longer time to amortize that out over the contract term. So a 15-year term, a network, now they already have facilities in your town, but they're asking for permission to build much more, many more facilities in your community to start providing video services to residents and businesses, to the home. And the nature of the network they're proposing, and this is important, is not a traditional fiber backbone coaxial cable to the house or even copper twisted pair to the house. Rather, this is a fiber-to-the-home network, and of course, that is more robust than those other networks and allows many more services to be delivered. And so fiber-to-the-home system, that would be confirmed by the contract. Next important point, and we've talked a fair amount about this, including at the public hearing, is they propose a build-out schedule for your city. They've divided your city into four quadrants. The first quadrant they would propose to build, they call Owatonna North, I've referred to it as sort of the northeast quadrant of your city. They would propose to build that out so that every dwelling, every business in that area would have a service available to them by the end of next year, by December 31st of 2015. Thereafter, we had a fair amount of discussion, and we talked about this in workshop, a fair amount of discussion about what would be the conditions for being required to extend beyond that Owatonna North section. Ultimately, as we talked about, the objective standard that we've negotiated is, once they reach 48% of the homes or businesses passed in that first quadrant receiving video services from Jaguar, that would be the trigger whereby they would have to begin construction in the next quadrant. In addition to that, of course, they would be entitled to, able to build out earlier than that, build out other parts of your city earlier than that as, as business and as opportunity dictates. And then lastly, with respect to build-out, they would be obligated to and have agreed to build out any part of your city that is not served or is not in the future served by Charter or any other franchised video provider. So sort of three levels of build-out obligation that have been negotiated. With respect to franchise fees, franchise fees, the fee paid by cable operators to put facilities in your right-of-way and use your right-of-way for, for profit-making. Charter has always paid 5% of its gross revenues as a franchise fee. Jaguar would, would pay the identical amount, so equivalent on that point. And then with respect to community programming, the cameras and programming that we see here in the council chambers, they have essentially agreed to all of what the city has been seeking for a couple of years in negotiations with Charter, splitting that obligation between Jaguar or those obligations between Jaguar and Charter. They would give you, as you've requested, two channels for the city's use. They would give you 50% of the $85,000 that we have calculated is likely to be required to buy new video equipment to do this programming, and they would agree to a fee, a per-customer, per-month fee to produce additional revenues for community programming if you, council-elect, to impose this fee of up to $1.25 per customer per month. So all of those have been agreed to. Staff and I, I believe, are recommending approval for first reading tonight of the franchise, and we're pleased with the results. Last point I would make is the base agreement, all of the stuff, all of the provisions, I'm not describing to you as highlights. To be clear, the document we've negotiated is based on the document we've been negotiating with Charter for a couple of years now. That document in turn was based originally on the contract that you've had in the past for the past 15 years. And so we didn't start over. We've started with the document that's been in place. We've improved it through your direction, and that is the base document that we've got. I will stop there.
Thank you. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
I guess I have a question to Jaguar.
Okay, sure. If you would like to come up to the microphone.
President Abraham, Mayor Coons, members of the council, shoot, council member.
All right. In the agreement, you, it stated 48% coverage. To me, that seems awful high, considering the cable contract or the cable provider that's currently here, along with satellite TV by Dish and DirecTV and that. My question would be, what's the likelihood that you'll move prior to reaching that 48%, particularly looking at doing a joint, joint project with the city to build out, you know, the underground services where the city wants to get their electrical and everything underground as well?
It's difficult to say at this point, and I would say your question really has two parts. First, that 48% level, and secondly, what the likelihood is of expansion prior to that time. We recognize that that 48% is a high bar, but we respectfully request that the council recognize what Jaguar is up against. We're essentially coming into a city where the incumbent is so entrenched that it's, it's almost untouchable. And were we not in a situation where we have this unique opportunity, because there isn't an existing franchise, to come in with a build-out like this? We couldn't even touch it. That's why communications with Jaguar fell apart before. And given that there are also satellite providers, we know that we're up against, up against it really to get the subscribers. We believe that members in the city will, will soon discover that what Jaguar offers is really a superior product. Bringing fiber to the home is something that we don't think Charter can touch, and certainly it's not going to be matched by the satellite providers. But that said, Jaguar does have a big investment. And so in order to provide an objective benchmark, which is our understanding the city really wanted, we had to factor in the business cost, and that's why we ended up at the 48%, which is a high level. However, we did want to retain and have done so in the, in the paperwork, retain the ability to move faster than that. And we have a couple of ways to do that. First of all, we have the opportunity to move into other sectors as we want to, and not necessarily in a total sector, but in part. So for example, if we have the northern sector served, and it makes economic sense for us to dip into one of the neighboring sectors right away and start that build-out sooner, we have the flexibility to do that. We also have the flexibility to consider build-outs even quite some distance from where we might already have network by allowing for a contribution in aid of construction. So if a particular area, neighborhood, group of businesses, something really wants Jaguar to come and is willing to help contribute to the cost of us bringing fiber to that area sooner than we otherwise would, we have the flexibility to do that as well. And we already have some fiber network in town that we could also build off of. It is our hope to move quicker, but we simply cannot be obligated to have to go to another sector before we hit that, that level. We're very hopeful that we'll be able to move at a faster pace.
I guess the second part of my question was, though, with the Owatonna Public Utilities Project, with all their underground construction, and what we approved last time for a joint effort between Jaguar and OPU, how much is that going to dictate where you go or how soon you go?
Well, certainly to the extent that there are those projects going where we're working cooperatively, that allows us to bring fiber to other areas that might be outside whatever sector we happen to be working in at the time. And part of the benefit of that cooperative agreement is that there is some flexibility in that regard. So certainly, we're open to that and, and hopeful that that will in fact be the case.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
So would it, given that you have some existing fiber network and working with OPU, are this, are there other areas in town that's, that is fairly realistic that you may end up serving some of those other quadrants just because you have the existing infrastructure there?
I don't think it's unrealistic, but at this point, I couldn't quantify that for you. To the extent that we have fiber to the premises facilities in other areas of town, it will not be difficult for us to provide video in those areas because it's, it's about the mechanics of turning on the video to those areas. To the extent that we may not have fiber to the premises in some areas, it might be more viable to build out, but at this point, it's premature for me to try and, and offer timing or specify particular areas, and I think our technical department would hang me high in the morning if I were to do that tonight.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, any questions from the council? Any other questions?
Of course.
What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dotson to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Bill Thompson. Any further discussion here? Seeing none, this is a roll call.
Councilmember Rainey?
Aye.
Svenby?
Aye.
Dotson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Burbank?
Aye.
Abraham?
Aye.
All seven ayes.
All ayes, and this has been approved. To proceed to our second reading, which will be in two weeks. Thank you. Moving on to resolutions, 3.5.1, Resolution 65-14, accept application for franchise agreement with Jaguar Communications. Chris?
I'm going to have Bob address that issue.
Back to Bob.
Chair, council, a little odd the way we're proceeding here tonight. Let me explain. We've just now approved first reading of the contract, the ordinance, the franchise with Jaguar. That's one piece of the puzzle. The other piece, it's a bit like public contracting. You've got a company, Jaguar, that is proposing to use a lot of right-of-way, including right-of-way that OPU is in and controls, and because they are using public property to build a very large infrastructure, it is typical, it is required by Minnesota law and typical around the country for cities to want to make sure that the operator, the applicant, is qualified, is qualified to be in your city, receiving permission from you to build out this network in your rights of ways. And so typically, and again, in Minnesota, it's required, cities will look at the legal, financial, and technical qualifications of a applicant for a cable franchise. That's particularly important, I think, here where you've got Charter, an incumbent provider that has commented on the application and has urged you to deny the application for want of certain qualifications that Charter spells out. for want of certain qualifications that Charter spells out. And so you have before you a proposed resolution. It's got a whole lot of whereas's in it. Again, I'm not going to go through them all. Those whereas's, though, lead to the following most important conclusions on pages four and five of the resolution. First, that Jaguar's application substantially complied with the city's application requirements. In other words, that they gave you enough information for us to make a decision about their qualifications. Two, that no legally sufficient basis to find Jaguar legally, technically, financially unqualified to receive a franchise has been identified. I guess I would look primarily to Charter's letter. In my judgment, and I've advised you of this, their letter does not raise a legally sufficient reason to deny the application, and that is now a finding or a conclusion that's before you. Three, the franchise negotiated with Jaguar is reasonable and serves the community's interests. You've just indicated your agreement with that point with your last action. Four, that the Minnesota-level playing field law, that's a law I've described to you any number of times, it requires parity or equivalence on three important areas, that that law doesn't apply because it requires that an existing franchise, in this case Charter's theoretically existing franchise, be compared to the proposed new franchise. As I've described to you in the past and has laid out here, Charter doesn't have today an existing franchise. Their franchise has expired. It's been expired for over a year, and we've been continuing to try and negotiate a new franchise. So that level playing field law doesn't apply, is the fourth finding. And then fifth, the fifth conclusion is that the build-out provisions that you've just asked Jaguar's attorney about, that have been negotiated with Jaguar, are consistent with the directives provided to local governments by the FCC and as described above. And what is described above in this resolution is that the FCC has found that build-out requirements requiring a competitor to build out a whole community all at once where that community is already served by an incumbent are or can be unreasonable. And so that is not what we've negotiated with Jaguar, and thus the proposed conclusion number five. So this is a resolution, again, that would approve Jaguar's qualifications, approve their application, and it is recommended for adoption.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion here? See none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved also. Congratulations and good luck. Next item is 3.5.2, Resolution 61-14, declare costs, weed assessments on 2014. We'll go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. Our fire department enforces our city codes on the mowing of weeds and grasses. This is our standard resolution that we pass every year. We're going to set the date of hearing for November 3rd on the proposed assessments for weed and nuisance. Staff would recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Bill Thompson to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll give it to Brent this time. Thank you. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Moving on to 3.5.3, Resolution 62-14, set date for public hearing to consider proposed weed assessment, and back to Chris.
As I said before, this simply sets the date of hearing for November 4th, or 3rd, I'm sorry.
November 3rd.
Yep. Staff would recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
The motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion here? See none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved also. Moving on to 3.5.4, election judges. Again, Chris.
Yes, the secretary of state requires that the city appoint election judges before Election Day. This resolution accomplishes that, as recommended, authorizing the city clerk to assign election judge substitutes if needed. Staff would recommend approval.
Thank you. I noticed that on 2.1, second ward, first precinct, we had the same name twice. Has that been corrected?
That has been corrected. Yep.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Bill Thompson to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? See none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved also. Moving on to 3.5.5, Resolution 64-14, accept RFP proposal and award policies for life and long-term disability insurance contracts. We go to Lynn.
All right, thank you, Les. We're here tonight to ask for you to adopt Resolution Number 6414. Recently, we have gone out for RFPs for our life insurance and long-term disability insurance policies for employees. And I have Amy Pals here with us with Oaks, and she's the one that took the data and compared it for us, so I'm going to hand it over to Amy.
Good evening. My name is Amy Pals, and I have been working with Lynn the last couple of months to complete an RFP process for your life insurance and your disability insurance, your long-term disability. The reason for that is there is a Minnesota statute that encourages public employers to go out to bid every five years on coverages where a taxpayer dollar helps cover that benefit. Because you offer a basic life insurance policy to the city employees and you also cover their long-term disability, that's why the RFP needed to be done. We sent out the proposal for life insurance to 17 different carriers, and that information is being sent around to you. Of those 17 carriers, four sent back responses. One of those individuals did not follow the guidelines. They were late, and one never answered any of the questions. But you'll see on the spreadsheets that we were able to document three of the carriers. One declined due to size, which is not uncommon, because a lot of these groups want to make sure that there's 500 or 5,000 employees. Eight actually responded that they weren't even competitive with your current rate, so I hope you recognize that the work Oaks has been doing is very, very well done for you. Two responded with only long-term disability rates, and then two sent back no responses. So of that, Minnesota Life came back with the most cost reduction savings, and on top of that, Minnesota Life came back and offered some supplemental life insurance for employees, spouse, and children. There would be a guarantee issue this fall where employees could get into the plan for $100,000, guarantee issue, no medical questions. A spouse could come into the plan at $25,000, guarantee issue, no medical questions, and then you can put $10,000 worth of life insurance on all the children for $1.30 a month. That $1.30 covers whether they have one child or six children, all at that $10,000 rate. With Minnesota Life, there are no participation requirements, so if only a handful of employees sign up, that's fine. There are no requirements, and there is no need for the employee to carry the same amount or more life insurance. One of the things that Minnesota Life did is they suggested actually a breakout, because when an employee retires right now after the 18 months, they can continue on their life insurance, their $12,500 basic life insurance policy at a cost that they maintain. Currently, that is all combined into one rate, giving the city a higher rate because you have a higher age population. Minnesota Life actually came back recommending that you split it out, an employee rate and a retiree rate, which is going to save the city the most amount of money. And that information is all listed in what Lynn had put together, talking about the 4% savings. With that, before I go into the life insurances, or before I go into the long-term disability, any questions on the life insurance?
Questions from the council? Let's move on.
All right, so then moving into long-term disability insurance. Everybody likes talking about insurance benefits, right? Okay, maybe it's just me. Long-term disability, we also sent out the request to 17 carriers. Six responded, seven not competitive, one did not meet the size requirement, two sent back no response, and one was a life-only, which was Minnesota Life. With the long-term disability, I want to point out that there is a very large savings coming your way, and also an enhancement to the employee benefit. Today, 50% of their wage is covered, but only up to $1,000 benefit. What was proposed when we did the RFP was 50%, but also to allow that to be increased to a $2,000 monthly benefit. What you see in front of you, proposed by Cigna, an insurance carrier, is going to be a 64.81% savings on the long-term disability with an enhancement to that benefit. There will be some value adds to that as well. They will add an EAP program, and that EAP program will really focus on if something happens and that employee is unable to work, major depression sets in. This EAP program is going to make sure they have the right assistance that they need. There's a wellness benefit, making sure that your employees are well and working hard. And then they also have an identity theft. All of these services will be available for all of the employees because this is a benefit that everybody is enrolled in. The annual premium is going to actually reduce to around $2,800 from the $7,900 that you're currently paying, so a cost savings of a little over $5,000 to move, but yet increase the benefit. With that, I have read the results, and I'll take any questions on the long-term disability at this time.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Bill Thompson to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved, and thank you very much for doing this. It's nice savings. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to council comments. We're down to council, public comments from the citizens. Anyone who wish to speak, please come to the microphone. Anything that's not on the agenda, ask be limited to two minutes. Please sign in. Anyone wish to speak?
Jawasik, I didn't have a comment when I started, but as is typical, I came up with one. Mr. Rainey's statement that we put chemicals in rainwater retention ponds for mosquito control reflects a chemical for every problem, we got a solution. And it also reflects what George Bush said, that we were addicted to oil. Mosquito control, and I don't know what we do for mosquito control in the city, but mosquito control in rainwater retention ponds should be biological and not chemical, like Minneapolis mosquito control. They do use some chemicals, I believe, but I know firsthand that they resort mostly to biological. I would hope that we can do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
It's interesting.
See none, we'll move on to council comments, and we will start with Kevin.
Nothing to add tonight.
Thank you. Brent?
Nothing to add.
Nate?
Nothing to add.
I'll go to Bill now.
No additional comment.
No? Greg?
I guess I'll follow suit.
Dave?
It isn't too many meetings where we get to hear of cost savings, and it's sure good to hear on the insurance part of the savings.
Thank you. Tom?
Nothing to add.
Chris?
Yes, I just have a few announcements, just to let you know that at Brooktree Golf Course, we are now at a buck a hole. Just to remind everyone, we have a brand-new patio out there, patio out there with a fire pit, so we invite you to get some last-minute golf in and have a hamburger out on our beautiful patio. Another event that we have coming up on Friday, October 10th, from 4:00 to 7:00, is Yappy Hour at the Dog Park. Free treats for your pooches and their people. Come celebrate the grand opening and learn about the Dog Park. And that's located at Chase, Lake Chase Park, 1915 State Avenue Northwest. On Sunday, October 12th, at 2:00 p.m., the Oatana Public Library will be hosting the anti-bullying video, and on Sunday, October 26th, at 2:00, that same video will be, or movie will be shown only for young audiences. Reminder that we are having the Oatana Exchange Club again is hosting the Firefighter of the Year banquet on Thursday, October 23rd, and Todd Ulrich is the firefighter of the year. That begins at 6:00 p.m. for a social, 6:30 dinner at the Eagles. And then finally, we are, Park and Rec is putting on a trick-or-treat trail on Saturday, October 25th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., starting at the Moorhouse Chalet, where there'll be activities, crafts, snacks, family-friendly spooky trail towards Lake Colmeyer, and local businesses have donated crafts and food and cupcakes and things, and it sounds like a really fun event, and we would urge everyone to come, and it's free.
Thank you. You have a comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I have gotten some calls in regards to recreational fires, and just a reminder that if you have a recreational fire, you must be present. You cannot let it burn overnight. No treated wood, no painted wood, and leaves are not allowed to be burned in that, so please be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I was, you kind of took that away from me, but that's okay, as long as it's announced. With that, Cheryl Entertain, a motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
Motion by Kevin, do we have a second? Second by Greg Schultz. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.